...process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call or the regular meeting on November 18, 2019. Please join Councilmember Cano on the pledge allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Heavenly Father, as our attention now turns to Thanksgiving, we acknowledge that we have much to be thankful for here in Goodyear. We are grateful for the thriving business attraction, our growing diversified housing stock, and for the capacity to undertake many substantial capital improvement projects for the benefit of our city. We give thanks for a civil and cohesive council, competent and committed city leadership, and the cadre of caring and collaborative employees who conduct the work of the city. Help us all to make sound decisions to meet today's needs and to move us to our future. We are blessed beyond measure and give thanks to you for our provision. In the midst of our holiday preparation and our celebration of the many good things happening in our city, we are also grieving. The pain of losing firefighter Austin Peck is still very deep and raw. On Friday, we lost a young man from Western Sky Middle School in a tragic accident. Scripture tells us in Ecclesiastes that "for everything there is a season, a time for every purpose under heaven, a time to cry and a time to laugh, a time to grieve and a time to dance." We grieve with those who are hurting and suffering from unimaginable loss. We ask you to hold these hearts close to your heart and let them know with certainty that eventually light will emerge from this darkness they are experiencing. Help our community to heal and for us to love our neighbor. We ask for your continued blessing and protection over the physical, mental, and emotional health of our police, fire, and military. In your name we pray. Amen.
Counselmember Cano, I want to thank you for that meaningful prayer. I think you call all of our concerns, all our best wishes, and some broken hearts over that, so thank you. Councilman Campo is on the phone. Are you there, Wally?
Yes, mayor, I am.
Well, welcome, and we really appreciate you taking the effort when you're out of town to call in. All right, so we are all present. We have no communication items tonight, and now is the time for a citizen who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? All right, then we'll go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items one through six by title only, please?
One, approval of minutes. Two, approve fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. Three, recommend approval of a new Series 9 liquor license for Circle K store number 9528. Four, approve the acceptance of the street turnaround easements associated with Hudson Commons Development. Five, approve the final plat of Palm Valley Crossing. Six, authorize the acceptance and release of sewer line easements in Pebble Creek Marketplace.
Thank you. Does council wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right. Can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda items one through six? Roll call, motion, please?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stiff and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. All right, so a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. There is one public hearing on the agenda. This public hearing item is to consider a rezone of approximately five acres from the planned area PAD to Public Facilities District PFD for the Fire Station 181. Open the public hearing. Planner Christian Williams will present. I guess you're on all night long, aren't you?
I know. Good evening, mayor and council. I would have driven in here on a fire truck had one fit in the building, but that wasn't possible. I'm here before you this evening with a request from the applicant Chad Billings on behalf of the owner, City of Goodyear, to rezone a piece of property with the intent of constructing a new fire station. The subject property is located in the central area of our city, near Litchfield Road and Van Buren Streets, more specifically at the southwest corner of 143rd Avenue and Celebrate Lifeway. The site is approximately five acres and is currently zoned as part of a planned area development for Goodyear Gateway. More specifically, the land is zoned for garden industrial. The surrounding parcels are zoned PAD, industrial, and are industrial in nature. The general plan calls for business and commerce. The proposal will hard zone the property for Public Facilities District and allow for a fire station as well as other public uses and facilities. A posting was placed at the property, and all property owners within 500 feet, there are no residential within the area, have been notified via postcard, and to date, no responses have been received. A few stipulations have been placed on the property, so they are not fabulous. The property currently consists of two parcels. The western parcel needs to be properly removed from the remaining southern portion of the aid out property, and the parcel then needs access to 143rd Avenue. This means the strip on the east needs to be removed from the larger plat and combined with the main parcel. These administrative processes are underway and will be stipulated with the rezoning. Staff has evaluated the impact of this rezoning and the surrounding properties, demand for services, and impact on other entities. With no major concerns being found, staff recommends the subject property be rezoned from planned area development to Public Facilities District pending council approval. With that, if you have any questions, I'm here for that.
Thank you. I know that it says here is Chad Billings, the city consultant is here.
He's not here, no.
Okay, great. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-2010 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2010 declaring as public records of certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 19-07A and legal description for Fire Station 181.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-2010? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Cano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a general comment. We've been looking for this for quite a while, just looking forward to go vertical. So, again, I'm in favor of this change.
I think we all feel that way on this dais, so that's great. Councilman Campo, do you have any comments?
No, thank you. I concur with Councilmember Pizzillo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, will the city clerk please read an ordinance Number 2019-1457 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1457, conditionally rezoning approximately five acres of land located at the southwest corner of North 143rd Avenue and West Celebrate Lifeway from Planned Area Development PAD District to Public Facilities District PFD, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-embridement corrections, severability, and an effective date and penalties.
Can I have a motion a second to approve the ordinance Number 2019-1457? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stiff and a second from Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Good, let's go down to number eight, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, FY19-20. Application has been postponed and will be considered at the regular meeting December 2nd, 2019. So I'd like to remind council now, as we go to the business section, to wait for a motion and a second before discussion. The first item on business is consider approving the preliminary plat for the Australia Parcel 12.36. Welcome, Alex Latinsky, our presenter.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council members. Just a second here. The preliminary plat before you tonight is Parcel 12.36 of the Australia Community. The parcel is located just northeast of the intersection of Australia Parkway and San Miguel. In June of 2019, the council adopted the ordinance rezoning the property for the Australia Parcel 12.36 PAD, which allowed for the proposed types of development before you tonight. The parcel includes approximately 18 acres, which consists of 40 lots and five open space tracts. The lots are located south of an existing Goodyear water tank. Access to the parcel is proposed off an extension of San Miguel, and secondary access is provided, proposed to be provided off of the cul-de-sac, which is accessible from Australia Parkway. There's an existing access drive for the water tank, so the proposal would be to allow for emergency access on that drive as well. All that being said, it does meet the city's engineering and zoning requirements per the approved PAD. Staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval on November 6th as well. That concludes my presentation. Pete Tyke is here on behalf of Australia and can answer any questions. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then can I have a motion a second to approve the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 12.36, subject to stipulation? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Cano and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. That's good evening, isn't it? No discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go right down to 10. Next item on business, consider approving the grant in aid agreement with the Tohona Odom Nation and the Goodyear Police Department. Acting Police Chief Santiago Rodriguez will present.
Good evening, mayor and council. So tonight, I am going to present... Sorry, make sure this is gonna work. Okay, perfect. So tonight, I'm asking to present on our unmanned aerial vehicles. We'll just call it drones to make it simple, right? So we have received the ability to receive a grant for $31,000 to get an upgraded UAV. So I want to go into our current state and then go into how that will benefit us. So how we use our current drone right now is through area searches. We look for missing persons. We use it in different aspects, high-risk situations where we might be able to get a look into things without sending our officers into danger, without getting a good eye on things. We also use it as evidence and as record and information at crime scenes. And we'll see a couple of things here in the next couple of slides of photos that are snapshots of the drone. The drone will actually take a video while it's up there, but these are snapshots of what is taken. So we've been FAA certified in the program since 2018, so the officers that do pilot the drone all have been trained and gone through the testing processes needed to have the appropriate certifications. And we also have a policy that we use in accordance with it. So as you can see here, the picture on the left there is a crime scene. As you can see, it gives us a bird's eye view of what is happening, and sometimes you pick things up from looking down that you wouldn't pick from the natural point of view or sitting on the ground. We also used it for agency assists in this accident reconstruction that you see there. That was in Verado not too long ago, but it gives the officers the ability to look at roadway marks and things to that nature to develop either a evidence or at least leads to move on in the investigation. We also use it for site security. Obviously, we know that's very important, to have plans for schools and things to that nature, for us to have those things readily available if we have to respond to something. So we do use it for that. And then, as you saw with the city center, the beautiful video of the land, we also use it for some of our capital projects in other parts of the city, too. So it's not just used at the police department, but it's used throughout the city for different things. To give you a little example, we might receive a call for a missing child in a certain location, and we know that we have water areas in our city, so we'd be able to deploy that drone immediately to check those water areas a lot quicker than officers would be able to get around. We also, in the past, have used our ladder truck to come out and take them out of service to be able to get up high to get those photos down. So this is also saving resources there where we're not having to call out our fire department. So the proposed UAV or the proposed drone addition is a lot more robust. It's actually made for law enforcement applications because it does have an enhanced zoom capability to pick up on some things. That can be used for other things also. It doesn't just need to be used for that. It also has a rugged body style. It's greater in the elements, so if we do have storms or if we do have it is sprinkling or raining, or we need to get it into an area that might be susceptible to dust or water, it's resistant in that aspect. So also, it has what's called FLIR, which is Forward-Looking Infrared Technology. That's what you see our Phoenix Police Helicopter, our DPS, I'm sorry, the new DPS helicopter has it also, but it gives us to pick up, it'll allow us to pick up heat in the darkness. Our current drones now, we wouldn't be able to deploy them after dark. This will allow us to see in the dark, obviously, if we have a rescue going on or if we have some type of fire or even a suspect running from us, it'll pick up the body heat of that person. It'll pick up animal heat. We can discern if it's an animal or if it's possibly our suspect or injured person out in the river bottom that we're looking for. So it has that enhanced search and rescue suspect locating technology. And with that, I ask that you approve our grant in aid agreement with Tohona Odom Nation and the related budget transfer of $31,000. It is a, matching funds is not required in this grant, so it'll take care of all the funds. It's nothing that we need to put towards it. And then the department will, the police department, will absorb all the costs that are needed for any maintenance or operating costs that will come ongoing with it. With that, that's the final part of my presentation, but I have, I can answer any questions that you might have in reference to our drone program, but what we're seeking tonight is to give Julie Arindal, our city manager, the ability to enter into the grant agreement.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Can I have a motion a second to approve a grant in aid agreement between the Tohona Odom Nation and the City of Goodyear for a grant in the amount of $31,000 to the Goodyear Police Department for the purchase of an unmanned aerial vehicle and authorize the city manager and her designate to execute all documents necessary to administer the grant award, and approve the related 2020 budget transfer of $31,000 that is required to expend grant. Open for council discussion. Wally, I'm gonna put you first since you're on the phone. Any discussion?
Mayor, we actually need a motion in a second.
Oh, I didn't know a motion then. All right, could I have a motion? Don't talk right, Wally. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stiff and a second from Councilman Loretano. All right, Wally, you're on.
Well, I'm in favor of this because it will enhance our police in capturing the criminals that we need, and it'll also help find lost persons. And I think it's wonderful that the Tohona Odom Nation would provide the funds for police departments to have these drones.
Thank you. Councilman Loretano?
Thank you, chief. I think it's a great program. Thank you, guys, for going out and getting that money, because I think it'll be very helpful, especially, we always hear about lost people up in the Australia's, especially in the springtime, so thank you.
Any other, Councilman Hampton?
No, I also think it's a great, it'll be a great tool for the police department to utilize. Are this, we also be continuing to use our two other drones, correct, that are daytime drones?
Yes, absolutely. They will be out during the day, depending on the application. Obviously, the new drone will give us better coverage at night in all aspects.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comment? Well, I just have to say, you know, never thought we'd see a drone ever, and I can remember the first time I was in an event, my husband and I, and it was like on a dance floor, and they showed this drone. I thought, you've got to be kidding me. And now, well, look what's happened. We may be riding in it someday up there, so...
Right.
It's amazing, especially for the police department, the way you're using it. It's just safety for our citizens, so I greatly appreciate it. And I think we all owe the Tohona Odom Nation a thank you for this grant, so, okay. Any, no other council discussion? All right, then all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The ayes have it. All right, we're gonna start this off with your comments and commendation, your reports, but as the mayor, I'm gonna start it off tonight. Okay, as you know, I've been in and out of the hospital, and you see, I'm walking with a cane right now. I'm just trying to please my family and the doctors. It's not easy to do a cane. I'm not very coordinated, but I'm doing it. I want to thank my vice mayor for taking over things. I know some of you took all the TV appearance, some of you did speaking, some of you did groundbreaking, and I have to tell you, it gave me great confidence, and I stayed home because I had someone, so I greatly appreciate it, so thank you. And it just shows how congenial the council is and how good all my council people are. And actually, I could walk out any day and not anyone for them to take it over, so I really appreciate it. So council, any comments? Councilman Loretano? What? You want, yeah, let's do that. We can do that. You can do that. All right, you can ask, I'm gonna allow that. Just go ahead and ask them, because we haven't been around a while.
Okay, well, I attended the Veterans Day, so first of all, I want to say thank you very much to all the veterans, and thank you for setting that up with the city staff. They did an excellent job, and you were missed, and we missed you a lot, so welcome back.
Well, thank you. I was home with my vet.
He's keeping you in line.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, my concern for the city manager, I haven't had the time, I found Rebecca on the elevator, and I kind of just got her. I got the privilege of driving up to Australia High School to drop something off at about 7:15 in the morning, and that was like taking your life into your own hands. The best way to describe it is, for those who don't drive it, there's one entrance into that high school, and you have a ton of people trying to turn left. It backs all the way up to the light now. You've got a ton of people trying to turn right to try to get into the high school. You have people hanging UEs because they don't want to wait in the left line, and then you've got this, I'm sitting there waiting to turn left, because that's the way I come, and I'm waiting, and I'm seeing like four cars in the left turn lane are going, and then two or three from the right-hand lane. So I assume there is a police officer doing traffic there. There wasn't. The kids have this unwritten rule, I guess, where they allow some of the left turn, otherwise the left turn lanes would never get in, and they stop. But the problem is, not everybody knows about this unwritten rule, and you've got people coming on the through lane from Australia, barreling through because there is no light there, so they're supposed, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. I saw, I just, it's like, when I got up there, I'm like, I'm supposed to go? I saw kids, I mean, someone's going to get T-boned trying to go in there, and you can't say just not turn left, because then you're just gonna start a problem where they're all gonna go around and make UEs to try to get the right in, because they can't get in the left. So I talked to Rebecca, and I don't know if she talked to the city manager or had the chance, because I know you were out of town and then we were gone, about, you know, what can we do? She mentioned maybe a half signal there, because it's only that one half of the road that really needs attention. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention and let the council know that that was an issue that I noticed, and it's pretty bad. I was up there this morning before work, and it's, you can't get, I mean, it's just a, you're taking your life in your own hands, and those kids, someone, somebody's gonna get T-boned going to school, and I don't want to see a car full of kids get hurt, so...
I think you're right in coming forth.
Maybe we could even reach out to Newland. I mean, their growth in the community, you know, both ways. Is Pete Tyke still here? No.
Well, Pete's here. He was here. All right.
Yeah, you know, I just would like to see if we could look into that, see what we could do.
And Wally, I'm gonna put you on next. Would you have any comments to make?
Well, first, I'm glad you're back, mayor. We missed you, and I did attend the Veterans Day event, and I forgot what all I had done because we were so busy last week, but when it comes time, I do have an inquiry for the city manager, though.
All right, great. Brandon?
Yeah, I went to the, went to, in Pebble Creek, went to the Electric Vehicle Expo, so thank you to staff for bringing the electric motorcycle and also at least one electric car. So a lot of people in the neighborhood really enjoyed that, and it was nice to be a part of that and represent the city and welcome people to that event. And then also, went to the Goodyear Startup School briefly. We had quite a few people graduate from that program, and a lot of exciting, exciting potential new businesses coming to Goodyear. They all seemed like they wanted to be in Goodyear, so I'm excited for them, and I'm glad that Dara is doing a great job there, so I'd like to continue, see that continued, and it's really neat to see the entrepreneurial spirit in our city and that growth, and people wanting to bring exciting new things to our city. So it was a great event, great program. I liked, I like, it's a really good one, so...
Good. Any comments? Yes, Laura?
I attended the Escape From Reality Abstract Art Show reception last week, and I just want to say that we have a growing, thriving arts community, and that's something that's essential for improving our overall quality of life. I also want to point out that the mayor's select artwork is already up for the young people, and so there's a lot of talented local artists, so stop by the Goodyear Library and check it out, because it's just so dynamic. I went to wagon tag also. That was a ton of fun. I saw dogs I've never even seen before. A lot of enthusiasm there, a lot of wagging tails. It was a great event. Thank you. Joe?
Well, first of all, it was an honor to speak at the Veterans Day, cover for you, mayor. I mean, it really was an honor to speak there on behalf of the council. And the Best of the West Awards, I was proud, my proud poppy, my granddaughter sang the National Anthem there. She, in my view, knocked it out of the ballpark, but I'm a little prejudiced when it comes to that. And the White Tank Servancy, seems like you guys got a lot of work ahead of you on that one. I attended that meeting for you. Very interesting discussion on how they're gonna figure out how to get all the different players on board, so that was a very interesting discussion. GIS Day, was able to talk to them as well. What was interesting with GIS, first of all, I don't consider myself highly competent when it comes to technology, but I, when I was talking to them, I said, you know, whenever I have a problem with the computers, I just call the 12 and 9-year-old girls. They help me out on that stuff. So it seems today, you know, the younger they are, when they were two or three, they So, it seems today, you know, the younger they are, when they were two or three, they figured it out. So, I always go to them, they're the experts in the family. But it's been a great week, and welcome back.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Bill?
I was, I was out of town with the army over Veterans Day weekend, but when I got back, we, Valley Metro Board Audit and Finance Subcommittee meeting to annual performance appraisal time for the auditor and the chief financial officer, and just some good conversations about creating some more transparency for Valley Metro and trying to move the, move the organization more into that direction. I think we've got a great, great future ahead of us and what we're trying to accomplish, so that was, that was good, and I'd like to just take this opportunity to wish everybody